I don't want to be pushed into the wall. I was hitting the wall. They already did. That's fine. Do you have my case? So you put all the comments and everything from the department? Here's a DPDW letter in the air. That guy. Can you go on to your next meeting?
I can sit next to her.
Welcome, everybody, to the onboard meeting, February 9th, 2016. My name is Marty Atkins, I'm the chairman. To my right, the vice chair, Mr. Caveas. To my left, board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. McGrath, Mr. Ray Dell. Ahead of me, Special Services, Mr. Duca. And to his right, clerk, Ms. Murphy. You have a cell phone or pager? Could you please put it on vibrate or silent? Anyone wants to speak, please step outside. It's hot enough to hear and hear as it is. Hope everyone could just keep it down. Anyone going to testify tonight? Could you please stand up and raise your right hand? If anyone's going to testify tonight? Anyone going to speak tonight? If you're going to speak, raise your right hand. Lawyers don't have it.
Swear to the truth, to hold truth, but the truth will help you God.
I have a motion to waive the three last minutes of January 26th, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the hearing of the minutes from January 26th.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion, CNN, no favor. Close. For the board, I have a letter here. Counselor, the doctor, the attorney. 130 Sumo Road. Is there anyone here for that case?
Yes.
Bad news. This is going to be held March 8th. A letter from Counsel Palmucci wants to have a meeting with the neighbors. And he's going to put it off until March 8th. So I have a motion, please.
This is Mr. Chairman, matter number 16-002. Anton Stella, for a variance to construct two two-bedroom townhouses on the Underville block. Terms is number 130 Sumo Road. Quincy, I make a motion to continue the hearing until March 8th.
Second?
Second.
On a motion? CNN, no favor. Close. So that'll be heard March 8th.
Here again?
Here again.
At the same time?
Yes. And it'll be a first case.
First one. Noticeable, noticeable, send out again?
No.
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 March 8th.
But you should get something from the counselor.
Yeah, well, we're in contact with him.
Did he tell you he's going to ask for a phone?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Just, you may already know this, but the thing that you guys sent out to us by mail had a lot of information.
Did it?
It said second floor shopping center.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Title. I was wondering what everyone's doing out there. Pretty darn sorry about this. Sorry about that.
Free choice, city hall. You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
It's, uh, once a year, we have a, like, a staff meeting. It won't take us 10 minutes. So can I have a motion to go into executive sessions, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to go into executive session.
The second?
Okay.
On the motions, CNN, no favor. Close. We reconvene in about 10 minutes, all right? Thanks.
Yeah.
So we're going to be qualitying Palm Grabs.
Is this live?
Meeting, uh, at four. Want to read the report? What's that? Yeah.
An executive session, Marty Atkins, was nominated, and everybody was in favor of him running as chairman for another year. He was voted in. Michael Vase was voted in as vice chairman for another year.
Work.
Now is voted in as president.
Back to, uh, moving this case number 15070. Bridgebrook LLC. Professional attorney, attorney, and special attorney doing a presidential filling on 2331 Bridge. See, I've been a representative here. Counselor.
Good evening, close. My name is Tom Williams, and I represent Bridgebrook LLC. And, uh, the Bridgebrook LLC currently consists of Mary Devans, brother Charles Devans, and Helmage, who is the architect. And, uh, Mary and Charles are here, and their family has owned this land for over 100 years. So they've been longtime residents of the city of Quincy. In fact, the land originally was their grandfather's. He was the first veterinary quinse, and he had veterinary shop there, so I don't know. I don't remember that, and I'm probably over the more people here. So if somebody here remembers, then good luck. But the, uh, that was just the history of the land. Uh, we believe that the land has a hardship. And the hardship is that it's all business. But what you have here, when you look at the land, is that one part of it is surrounded. You've got the MBTA running right here, and then you have Furnace Brook running right here. Uh, and then you have a one-way street, a very narrow one-way street right here. It's in front of Interface Social Services coming down. So you, we could build on this property, we could build by right, a six-story commercial building of 105,000 square feet with 175 cars. This is by, without a variance to do anything, you can do it by right. But in reality, that would be a poor location for a commercial building, because the access would be limited. You've got a train on one side, you've got a work on the other, you have a very narrow street entering it. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a good access. It wouldn't be a good, uh, commercial piece of property. It would be a terrible place to put a strip mall. It would be a terrible place even to put an office building. Uh, for residential, it's prime residential property. Currently, there are three, two families on the property, owned by the Devans family. And, uh, and they've created this LLC to, to develop the property. And what we're looking for, we're looking for a variance to make a residential building in a commercial zone. And we're also looking, and when you're in Business C, under section 4.122 of the zoning bylaw, you're supposed to have 42,000 square feet. And what we have here is 31,351 square feet. And that's the only thing that we're looking for the variance for, because we're going to have 45 parking spaces in the new building. The new building's going to have 22 parking spaces underneath, and they have 11 on one side and 12 on the other. So we're going to have 45 spaces, and that's how much parking spaces you require to have a third unit building. And in fact, we're going to have a lot of green area around the building. You can see, this is the footprint of the building. There's the parking lot right here, and then you have a substantial amount of green area. Now, the entrance to the building is going to be down here, right here, Thayer Street. And so what happens is this, currently, there is a couple of entrances on the street that are, when people come down, they're coming down this way and that way, they're coming in. Now you're only going to have one entrance and exit, and it's going to keep the, the traffic flow much closer to Hancock Street. On the composition of the building, there's going to be 21, uh, unit apartments, five, uh, I mean, 21 bedroom apartments, uh, five two-bedroom apartments, and five three-bedroom apartments. And what we anticipate, because you're so close to the train, we anticipate that there probably will be people in this building that won't even have an automobile, because of the fact that you're just a walk to the T. And we have the one bedroom, uh, a lot of those one-bedroom units. Now, in this zoning, uh, under the zoning ordinance, you would need 325 square feet per unit of, of land. We have 1,045 square feet of land, so we have triple the amount of land that, that, uh, that is required. Uh, the width of the lot is supposed to be 100 feet. We're 258 feet. The minimum yard setback is 15 feet. We're going to be 23.73 feet. The real law is 15 feet. We're going to be 38.78. The side is 15, we're going to be 30. The, uh, other side is going to be, uh, the minimum is 15, we're going to be 34.77. The green space per unit, the minimum required by the ordinance is 100, we're going to be 175. Uh, the parking setback is by the ordinance is 10 feet, we're going to be 15. Uh, the number of dwelling units, we're going to put is 30. You could, okay, under, if we had the 42,000 square feet, you could go as many as 96 units. You would require a lot more units. So we're, we're really not trying to overload the area. We're looking for something that's very livable, very doable, and very, uh, very attractive. And, uh, when you take that with the Temple property, and you take it with the new Marymount School, they, uh, it's going to be a very beautiful entrance for the city. Uh, whereas right now, you do have older buildings, uh, they're, they're, they're not in terrible shape, but they're older, they're aged. And all of a sudden, if you put a brand-new, uh, complex there, right, and you've got the T in one place, and you've got the Furnace Brook in another, and you're going to keep the majority of the trees that are currently there on this side and on the back. Uh, it, it should be a very beautiful, uh, complex. We've had a community meeting, uh, we, uh, it should be noted that this street coming in, okay, uh, Bridge Street coming in is one-way. It's a one-way street. So there's no, it's not going to cause any excess traffic going out to Adams Street, because then you just can't get there that way. Uh, and we don't anticipate, uh, one of the, one of the neighbors, one of the abudders, they said to us, we've had a community meeting, and they said what they were concerned about is the, uh, the parking. They're concerned about the parking. They're concerned about when you build a building, wherever the contractor's going to park. They, you can park on the lot. The lot is a big lot. There's plenty of area, and we, we don't mind being required by the variance that any contractor that's going to work on the property has to park on the lot, not on the street. Because there's plenty, plenty of free space here. And we're only going to do a minimum of underground work, because they have to do an underground work. So underground work for the elevators, and some underground work for the, uh, the stairways, and you have to make a connector. But the, the main building is going to be on a slab, so consequently, you won't have it. This building's going to be a green building. The architect is Helmage. He's going to, uh, he has a vast experience building buildings all around, uh, Boston and Cambridge and the South Shore, and he's going to describe his building. But principally, uh, what we're looking for is just a variance to be able to build in a Business C zone, a residential building, and to build it on, uh, 31,351 square feet, rather than the minimum of 42,000 square feet. But other than that, we comply with everything that the zoning, uh, calls for. Oftentimes, people go in, they're looking for a variance, and they'll give you some great big numbers, something like that, and then they want to take less or something. What we have done is, we, from the, the beginning, we said, let's propose a building, propose a variance that fits, that works. So we have one half, we have enough parking. Parking's the big issue with the city of Quincy. We have, what we think is actually more than enough parking, because, uh, we have 20, uh, one-bedroom units. We don't, and they have one and a half, uh, spaces apiece. We don't anticipate them using those spaces. And, uh, so we, we expect they have plenty of parking. And, uh, I'd like to have this, uh, march, this, that building some more. Okay?
We stole my fire. Um, we're not in the new culture for this project, but if you can't see, you can always move forward. So, um, like Tom said, uh, we have a, uh, we have a site of 31 plus 1,000 square feet. Three, uh, two families that we're going to raise to create a building that will basically be, uh, a six-story apartment building with trees, existing trees off our site. So we can't, don't anticipate having any of those trees. And the, uh, topography here, if you can see, just off the property line, drops off significantly from, uh, it's, it's almost 20 feet down. These two lines are 10-foot, uh, gradients. And that's where all the trees are in, on the, on the slope. And it's also part of the old Temple property. So we're not touching any of those trees. And then the trees along the tracks, again, are outside the property line. We're not touching those. Our landscaping is very basic. There's an existing garden now that Chuck, uh, and his family, uh, nurtured, and we're going to keep that. We've oriented our building perpendicular to the tracks, directly perpendicular, for sound reasons. Sound mitigation from the noise of the train. We have 30 units, and if, this is the civil plan that we had designed for us. We have 30 units, and perpendicular to the tracks, we're going to have a articulated exterior wall for the effect that each of these, uh, every other wall will be solid to reflect sound. And the other, the opposite angle will be where windows will occur, the interiors. And so the building ends up looking like this. In addition to the solids reflecting sound, both this whole facade on the opposite side, this is, this is the Bridge Street side, the opposite side that faces the tracks will be solid and have solar panels all along the facade. And then each and every solid that faces the tracks, or solid by reason of reflecting sound, will also host solar panels. And then the angles that face away from the tracks will have the windows and doors. And to show you what I'm talking about, if this is due north, these panels and, and solids are due south. This is southwest, and these are west. So we get sun all day long, and therefore, the, uh, the facade both function as, you know, sound mitigation and electric generator. We've gotten, uh, going to be parking under the building on the first floor, so it's open. First level of units are on the second floor, a little more gracious. And then our, our basement is basically a small underground connector for elevator shaft, electrical, and, and water rooms. And since, since we've got to go down there, we have to have two means of egress, so we're just connecting the stairways, and along that border will have some storage units. We're not excavating underwear with parking, because again, that costs more and is not necessary. We've scaled the project to have 45 apartments, uh, sorry, 45 parking spaces on the site. And that then generated our ability to build 30 units. And 30 units on six floors, or on five floors, actually, is six units per floor.
What's the size of the solar system? What size is the total kilowatt?
175 kilowatt hours, uh, potential. There's 700 panels, potential. We're going to be feeding the grid on, by the contractor that we have, doing the concept. And they, these are the, these are the, as a sample of the, we're going to use. I'm sure you've seen it before.
Any questions? Not yet. Any questions? All right, we can get back to this.
The roof deck is of, is full, um, open roof. We have, the elevator will come up. We have stairs down, and a second pair of stairs down for egress, um, as well as the green space on the, on the bottom, which brings up the, uh, required open space. And so we're really complying with zoning regulations, except for the size of the lot, but the number of units and the number of parking spaces are based on the size of the lot, not. Anything else?
So, Brian?
It says, I, as I read the, the handouts and I listened to the presentation, it says residential. Do you intend to rent them or to sell them eventually?
We, we're going to wait, we're going to build the building, and then see what the market is. The building's going to be built, uh, as, as, just like it's an apartment house. But the apartment house, it can be, it can be solar condominiums, kept as an apartment house. And it really depends upon who we are in the market, and where we are with the financing. It's not as where it goes, because it, as you know, it takes some time to get every, all the permits and everything going. And we have to see, you know, we don't want to say it's a condominium, and then all of a sudden, uh, something happened internationally, and you couldn't give away a condo at the same time. So we don't want to, we just want to say it's going to be residential, and then, then we'll make it the very end pick which we're going to call. Thank you.
Tom told you I was the best partner in the, in the project.
Yeah.
Our view at this point is apartments, but, yeah. Market in there condos, that's a whole nother process through you folks, I know that as well. So, but it's, for now, it's apartments.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Say your presentation.
That, that's my presentation.
Any, any questions at all?
Is there a reason you even go to planning board for us?
Actually, we do. We had a preliminary.
Oh, you did?
They suggested we comment, you guys first.
Really?
Mr. Fatsias, and we sat with, um, Martin Brins.
Yeah, just like to see what they have to say.
Yeah.
And their comments, that's, that's usually, I get some comments back first. We all.
Well, we haven't made an official, like I said, it was preliminary.
Yeah.
We showed them basically the same thing. They said that, you know, because of the land size, that was something they couldn't speak to, and suggested we do this first. You know, it's just who comes first, chicken or the egg?
Yeah. We just had this discussion. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call that part of the hearing closed. A letter here from the DPW. It's dated November 17th, 2015, Bridge Street, 23 to 31, case number 15070. We reviewed this mill for the About Rowlands project. Our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, submit a stormwater report for review. Four, install survey monuments to donate to public right-of-way. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, apply for a stormwater connection permit from the Department of Public Works before construction. Seven, upon completion of project, ASBIL showing utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining total site facilities right-of-way need to be submitted along with digital file. The ASBIL plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional soon, professional surveyor, professional engineer. Anything further, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
I am.
Okay. Name and address, please.
My name's John Rodafale, 62 Grimwall Road, Quincy, Mass. And, um, this is Ward 5. I live in Ward 5. Um, my dad lives in Ward 5. I actually live part-time in town, and, uh, this reminds me of an apartment kind of right next door to me. I mean, six stories, one bedroom unit, exit of train tracks. The market rent is going to be pretty much what section eight is for one bedroom. So I foresee this being 30 section eight units, and, um, that's right near the Adams House. You can walk there, just like people hang out undesirables in the center. Last, um, meeting, you guys went to Isard Street. All the neighbors came out. They were against that project. They said do something better. Um, I believe something good could be there. Maybe like, um, double the bottom, make it two stories, make it condos. Two-bedroom condos, you would get like 350 a square foot. I would be for that. That would be good people, working people coming to the neighborhood. We do, this is just bad. I'm against this. Um, I'm disappointed that the, um, the ward counselor is not up here right now, um, speaking against this. Um, this is important, and, um, it's a bad project. So, um, you know, I would let the planning people talk about this, and then, you know, let them come back and come back with a better plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Last call? Call the public hearing closed. I'll tell you what I think. I think that planning should take a look at this before we make our decision. Uh, I, I, I think it's a tough street, but that could work. I think that building maybe could work, but maybe planning's got something that I, that I, us don't see.
Would they, would, would planning require a traffic study? You have to say Hancock Street?
They could, very much so, sure. And we could do the same thing right here.
We've got a proposal from John.
So it could be the same thing here, that you could do that. So instead of that, instead of the writing, let them look at their reviews, instead of us on a, independent.
And again, my concern is, is, um...
Double, double taxi.
Is coming, uh, from Adams Street, making that turn in there. If that's, if, if people come off the expressway, and they, and they come right up, uh, come up the height of the road there, at the backside, I can't, you know, it's up ahead. And then make that turn, right, make that turn up over the bridge, and then make that turn into there.
I can't, that's, that's...
There's a median. Say again? No, no, I mean, you put it over the bridge, unwind, over the red line bridge there. So then, there's a median there that prevents the left from going down the turn?
Yeah, that's an illegal left turn, if you do that.
Is there a median there, though?
Yes.
Okay, so then they'd be going down so that they could get the fail.
They'd go down. The Allen Line to there, for Allen to Hancock Bridge, either way. Or continue down to Furnace Brook Parkway, take a right, and a right, and a right.
Oh, okay, from all the way back to Hancock, and then come back around, right?
No, just one... Or just go down to the Furnace Brook. Take a right, and a right. You're just flipping around the other, come around.
We're talking about...
Come right up Furnace Brook, right, right to Hancock, take a right, right.
This one's a little... You can't really make a left here, so you'd either come around here, or you come down here.
Well, you can, you know, on two now.
Well, you got to go around that.
In fact, you see...
You have to, you can go, you can take a left there. Taking a left there, my entire life to go to follow-offs.
Yeah, you go follow-offs. Then you get out straight.
Right.
You got to go straight, just pass along, because you're going to pass this street.
See, that's even true. Bridge comes out to Adams.
But you could go down there, right there. You'd be making a U-turn if you did that.
Wait, Bridge comes out to Adams. All right, Adams and Bridge connected, right?
But it's one-way only.
Right, I know. And that, and that building that's on the corner that used to be the Servo Policy, what's that being used for now?
That's Interface Social Services, that's a food and a pantry. Um, let me clarify, we're more than a food pantry. I'm Jim Thorne, I represent...
I'm Jim Thorne, I represent.
Jim, what's your address?
Well, mine, I live in Milton, but I'm.
Fine, which are, which are your addresses?
Seventy-eight Granite Place, Milton, right on Quincy line. And we serve as Milton Quincy pantry all around. But we, of course, our heaviest traffic is from clients in Quincy. And we have about seventy-five, an average seventy-five individuals and families per day that use our pantry shelf food pantry. Between the hours of nine and twelve.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay.
And we have deliveries, we have our own truck that does daily pickups from the Washington Blue Bank and other markets that are supporters of us and provide us with.
Do they come in the front door?
No, I mean, we have to go to Bridge Street and they, they come in. We have a small parking area in back, probably about a half dozen cars and a roof for the truck. And we have load there. We have to back in and out of there on the Bridge Street, which is a very, it's an old, old street. Narrow street, doesn't perform well.
Well, that's my concern, you know? And then my other concern is if they come down Bridge to take a left onto Hancock, like if they were headed to Boston with the development going on at Central Middle School. To be that kind of.
Well, that's the basic way you go because going up Fair Street is an obstacle and a half because they have parking, there's usually nine or ten cars parked on, along, well, if you're coming, going up there from Bridge, you could be on the left. There generally, a lot of my tenants are Hamilton House, whatever they call that, big apartment building behind seventy-seven.
I, basically, I like the project. I like everything that it does. My major concern is the people's traffic in the area on the, on the street. And I don't know what you're gonna generate from volume, but turning into it and turning out of it is a concern.
And we also have a thrift shop in the afternoon from about twelve-thirty to three-thirty and four for the general public.
I'm thinking computer rules, they'd probably be out earlier or in later. But it would contribute to some of them, I'm sure.
Yeah, we have less, less business in the evening. We also have new directions counseling, which is basically afternoon and evening when people have an opportunity to come in after their work hours or.
Well, where do they park? Where in Bridge Street?
They park, yeah, they park on Bridge Street.
I mean, I was down there and it's parking's brutal.
Yes, it is, it is. We've tried, you know, approached a number of our, you know, seventy-seven we approached. We approached the fitness center, trying to, you know, buy parking. We get parking from, and no success. Thank you. You're welcome.
I would prefer if somebody could look at the traffic situation.
We just put it back.
A reasonable question.
Let's see what they got for stuff and then we'll make that.
I'd be in favor of a traffic study. I just look at, I do a plant here, it looks like an extremely tight radius just turning in. My eyes are seeing almost just a sixteen-foot turning radius off of Bridge Street. I mean, they get a ladder truck in, public safety, anything like that, that seems often tight.
Ladder trucks wouldn't be coming down a one-way street. They wouldn't even fit, you know, off Bridge Street probably. You know, we definitely wanna be a good neighbor and solve the issues of parking on the street, but it's really the traffic that's the issue. We've solved our parking, a hundred percent. But Bridge Street coming this way, one-way, and this way, one-way, to a point where our, our, yeah, let's not, our curb cut is twenty-five feet opposite there. In fact, edging towards end. So there will be actually more populated park on the curb, on the one-way part of Bridge Street. In my experience with traffic studies, which we are engaging Mr. Gillam to produce that for us. We've got a proposal for him. And that was in, in compliance with the plan board requirements. In my experience with forty-five cars, we only have thirty units, but we have forty-five cars. If we consider all forty-five cars coming and going twice a day, that's ninety trips. We have three ways, one, two, three, to get in and divide that. Ninety by three, that's thirty. But this is one-way. So really, when we're talking about the potential of fifteen cars a day, additional trips, one-way on that part of the street.
Okay. What do you think? Been here.
I'm also trying to think of the applicant too. I mean, they have to do a traffic study anyway.
Right.
And they can come back with that traffic study. And, you know, everything else, if we was to say yes today, for example, you'd still have to do all that study or that peer review and so on. So, you know, I think I am concerned about the traffic. I can see people talk all over the place. And the Fair Street wasn't even plowed, I don't think. It was a mess. Wow.
Thank you.
There you go. Which is crazy, in my opinion, that you have to do that, but that's, you do enough stuff. So, good stuff. I, I'm okay with taking sending this to the planning.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in matter number fifteen dash zero seven zero, Bridge Brook LLC, Carol Charles, I'm gonna kill your name, folks, I'm sorry. Why don't you say it? To construct a thirty-unit residential building on the premises number twenty-three thirty-one Bridge Street, Quincy, I make a motion to extend the hearing to.
Can I have a date?
It's gonna, it's gonna take them like four weeks anyway, right?
At least.
Yeah, six, yeah, too much. It's like.
April twelve?
Yeah.
April twelve?
Second?
Second.
On the motion? In or on favor?
Aye.
Both? Some more? Part of the public hearing is over. Thank you. Thank you. Further on to whole business, case number fifteen oh seven three, one thirty-six Crescent Street. Dwayne Derry, Varianis, to construct a new garage with a residential unit on the side and rear setbacks on the premises, one thirty-six Crescent Street.
Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is Steve DeRoche, the Fox Valley Survey Associates, with our offices at ninety-five White Street here in the city of Quincy. I'm here this evening with my rep, Adam, and my clients, Mr. and Mrs. Dwayne Derry, who are proposing to build a structure on their property that will house two-car garage on the first level. And on the second level, it would house one unit. I'd like to just throw out some bullet points if I could. First of all, this project is located in the Residence Speed District, which does allow for multi-family. The garage as garage slash residence as located on our plan now does conform to zoning if it were just a garage. But we have a second unit. And, I mean, we saw we have a unit above it. And that is supposed to conform to the zoning setbacks that third, fourth, and the sides, twenty to twenty-five, over here. If you look at the assessors map, you'll notice that a project is right beside the three family, which is on the corner of Badger Lane. And right behind that structure, that is laid on Prep Coen Street, is a four unit. But however, you know, given the devil is due, there are two single families behind, directly behind that project. This, this whole proposal is not put together nearly willing. There's some thought put behind it. Mr. Derry has an extremely good-looking house there right now. It's only the old contemporaries in Quincy.
Very nice.
And to have him try to scavenge a unit onto it would be, I think, would be a shame. He's looking for an extra unit because him and his wife are both from the old country. And they have a lot of people coming over, well, four, five, six months out of the year. And they're looking for somebody to keep them, to let them stay. So therefore, he's, he brought up this idea of putting a second unit above a garage. There is one place to also look at possibly putting this building is right behind the existing house. But if we do that, it's just gonna, if I could use the word, acidize the property. It's not gonna be very good. Okay. So basically, I think that's, that's basically it in a nutshell. What we'd like to do, and hoping that the board can see the way to give us a really.
Now, the garage right now, that's, that's a two-car garage, the way it sits?
There's no garage.
I thought there was a garage in the back.
No, no. You might be looking at, well, the. Next to our house is a single family and then next to that is a two-family. There are two residences, one behind the other on Crescent Street.
I saw that.
So there's no garage in our property.
There's a big fence going across.
Yes, that's correct, yes. But we won't have to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. So anyone wants to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor, first time? Second call? Third call closed. Correspondents?
No.
I did want to make mention.
Yeah?
You do have a lot of them, the interior apartment. And again, we did not get into the drainage of this project yet, or the utility connections yet. If the board will approve it, we'll make sure that everything is up to snuff with the city and their department.
Dwayne here, December twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, one thirty-six Crescent Street, case number fifteen oh seven three. We reviewed this mill for the Abbot reference project. Our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased through the development. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff of the drainage treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area in all driveway entrances. Five, on completion of this project and as-built plans showing our utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, benchmarks, defining the total site facilities right of way needs to be submitted along a digital file. The as-built plan should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor, professional engineer. If anything further, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call? Call a part of the hearing closed. I just, personally, I don't like it. I just, that's just me. I just, I just think it's, we got a nice house there that's gonna turn up leave. What a driveway and it's just not a good fit. I don't like the project myself. That's just me. Comments?
These keep coming before us and I'm reluctant to allow them because once we do open it up, I mean, we just rejected freedom in West Quincy in the last three months. I, I. I don't, I don't, I'm not a particular fan of houses above garages and areas like this.
I mean, it's such a good, we don't have to block it. And we could've done that, it could've made a plan, built a house, a unit thing, something that's not popping up like that. And now that, now you got another driveway all the way up there, it's coming down. And you get the driveway and it's, you know, it's like, where do we end? Where's the stop? Everyone who's in a V wants to turn it in. If they wanna, they gotta, they gotta do it. They're gonna build it right into the base. They just rebuilt that house. I don't know why it might take later to do it before, but that's just me.
Mr. Chairman, the day of my site visit, I did meet with the owner. He does look like he could use some type of shed. I mean, he had nowhere, he, he, he thorough tour of the home, he is downstairs, very laundry, things like that. So I'm just not in favor of living space out there. A shed, a garage, we all need them. You need your lawn equipment. He's a carpenter by trade and does a lot of home improvements. And I just wouldn't be in favor of living space back there. But something to come back with a shed, of some type, a garage, shed, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Huh? I have no issue with that.
How do you feel about the project?
I think I'm kinda on board with the rest of the board members. There's, we've done a few, we've had a lot of these come up. I agree. We have a way of building.
Just a garage and then you got the living.
A living space.
It's just.
All the problems.
Yeah, it's just, it's like a big building all of a sudden. It's not residential, you know, cashed, detached, you know? It looks nice.
I really have a problem with how small these setbacks are. They're proposing five at the rear, three on the left. I mean, you're taking, which was a kind of a very large, not very large, but a nice sized lot. And now we're really all kind of making it, pushing it into this little corner. So I, I might be in favor of a garage. I would like to see it moved a little bit. I mean, I'm not sure if that can be done.
Oh, if it was a garage, just go back. It would be right the way it is right now.
Right, right, right in the back.
The, what they've, I'd like to just point out to the board is that, again, this can happen right in the backyard. But it's gonna, it's gonna screw up a property. You're gonna have a garage with a unit above it, whatever. And it just seems like out of the two locations, this is the most logical from spot to put it.
I just, I, I just can't hold this.
I'll, I'll do what I do most of the time and the board allows for you to withdraw this. But I'll prejudice if you'd like. Or you wanna go? You have a call?
I think I've heard the board have taken, let's draw a lot.
Do you have a motion, please?
In matter number fifteen dash zero seven three, Dwayne Derry, for a variance, construct a new garage with a residential unit above, above with inside rear setbacks on the premises number one thirty-six Crescent Street, Quincy, I make a motion to withdraw. So matter without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda. On the new business. Sixteen oh oh one, Samuel Sung for variance, finding to change the use of the home back to a two-family residence on the premises number forty-four, Summer Street, Quincy. The applicant and representative here.
Yes.
Name and address, please?
My name is Gerard McCallum. The address, I guess, is forty-three Quincy Ave. He, Mr. Sung is the applicant. He, my, his, the back of his property, that's the back of my property. And what he's seeking to do is, he, when he bought the house about three years ago, and when he bought it, he thought it was listed as a two-family, thought it was a two-family. He bought it as a two-family. He's, was it something we told is not a two-family, it's a single family. He's looking to put it back to what it had. It's the house that Chief Barry, again, I guess, right? Chief Barry used to own that house. And he's the one that turned it back to a one-family.
Right.
And he's not talking about changing anything on the outside. The only change would be changed on the inside. It's the whole, most of the street presently has multi-family units on it. My, my office building, next door to his.
Yeah.
They're all multi-family units. I think there's one single-family unit. He's simply looking to put it back to what it had.
Can I see the listing?
Sure. Two things. Remember, it was listed as a two-family house when it was, when it was given to him. I'll make those comments. Also, there was a letter I sat on, I sat at the meeting, that, that they made it an offer for one-family home. So we discontinued it to him. So I can meet it here if you'd like. A letter was written to the record from the applicant stating they accepted an offer as a single-family home and they're withdrawing the project. That being said, that being said, do I agree that it's a two-family house? Yeah, I do. I do. But he did make, he writes a letter and said he bought it as a single-family home. Is there all two-family homes on that street? Yes, there is. No question. Is that set up for two-family? No question. Hope he's always should've been. Some guy had the money and made it a single-family, it's a two-family. Some guy had the money and made it a single-family, it's a two-family. I talked to the council today about it, he lives right there. So I'll get into it later, but, any questions of the applicant?
When was the last time we heard this? Were you, were you neighbors or, I don't know?
No, not at all.
No? What garage started in front?
No, no, because really, it was... For the last three years, what's been going on on that property is this gentleman here, he just cuts the grass every day, cleans that place, it's a perfect, you can find a house, it's perfect, and I'm one of the folks who went up, he helps the neighbors when he stays. You don't live in that property though, correct?
I...
You rent it?
Yeah, I did, and fairly recently, I moved to another house.
All right, well, you're still there doing all the work, yeah, okay. The council, I talked to you today about that. Uh, that, those are my questions, I'll get into it in a minute, but I think, uh, we have a little time, but, any questions, y'all?
Can you clarify what you just said? So, when he bought it, he bought it as, was it his letter or the seller's letter?
No, the letter, they got a letter buying this as a single-family home. And if they lived, they would say, yeah. Now they wanna turn it back to a two-family home. And I talked to the council today, and, uh, says he's meticulous about the property design, keeps it raw, whichever way it goes. He said his wife was coming here tonight to speak for him, but maybe she didn't make it.
Oh, yes, yes.
I looked everywhere. So, uh... Right, there's someone here that's gonna speak for him. So that, that's... The letter, original letter, came from the real estate, and said, we got an offer to make it a single-family home, because they wanted to buy the property, they didn't want to move the house.
But it was originally listed as a two.
It was listed as a two.
When they went to go buy.
They realized it wasn't, so they came back here, we continued to having, and in the meantime, the guy wants to buy the house, he moved in, he goes, listen, I can't...
But that was, but that was Barry's son.
Son, yeah.
But wasn't this gentleman?
No.
No.
Barry's son.
Barry's son, right.
Oh, I thought you bought it.
In two thousand twelve, the previous owner.
He did buy it from Barry's, it was a trust. Right. It was Barry's kid. Yeah.
Barry's kid pleaded as a two-family.
Which it was, really supposedly thought it was, because he didn't know that the records changed. I don't know, he's not paying on a two-family, right? You know, Ba, you know, you know Barry wasn't gonna pay for a two-family, so that's why he...
Wasn't even...
He knew that was gonna happen.
But that's what I'm saying, I, I seem to remember that some of the neighbors in there were, I, I don't know why it sticks out to me, the two or three of the neighbors, we're talking about parking at the moment, guys, when Barry came in.
I have some doubts about the property that I'll get into, if, if you guys think it's okay, but you can't stay the way it is, it's got a two-fence, it's got a cutout, it's got a curb cut.
But I think that was the issue, I remember some of the neighbors complaining about turning, right?
Yeah, there was a record, there were a couple of neighbors in, in the previous record.
Opposed to...
They were concerned.
They're concerned.
Ken Sherlock was concerned with parking.
So it's like, even the way it's set up now, you're pulling that, you go around like that.
I don't see it here tonight, man.
Right, you gotta cut that chain link fence and really make it a two-family pocket. So now you could get spaces here, spaces there, and then you even got a fifth car that you'll have room for while we pull in, and you'd have two lines of traffic, at least now. Maybe you could have a third car in it, depending where you drive, and you get the garage. So I mean, plenty of room there, which, we'll get into it, I guess. Any other questions, y'all? Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Rel. Carl sixty-first street. Do I have to come up there?
No, you can, you can...
Whatever you want.
You gotta be here.
Yeah.
This is not my scene here, so. Rel. Carl sixty-first street, I live across the street, and, um, just wanted to add to what you said, really, um, we, we're in a similar situation where our property was listed as a two-family, it wasn't, so we had to go through the same process. But I think, like what you said, the street, they're all two-family homes. There's been multiple cars that drive in before, this is never a parking problem, I see them, you know, moving cars in and out to get cars in and out, they never have anybody parking in the street. He's over there, you know, doing snow blowing, trimming the trees, took a tree out, actually, to pave part of the front yard to make more parking.
Plenty of...
Plenty of parking, uh, he's a very good neighbor, so I just wanted to support him.
Very good, thank you. Second call, third call, call up our hearing close?
No comment letter.
No comment letter, BPW wrote a letter, they don't have any comments. Anyone opposing on the side, first call, second call, third call, call up our, the hearing close. If I was, the way it goes in the back here, it's gotta be, uh, really, you need a curb cut on that place, and you also need that fence moved. And if your client wanted to do that, I'd be willing to, be one vote, one vote in your favor. Make it two full spaces and get the curb cut for the, for the distance of what you need for the end of the box, all right? He says he would be, so that way there, it's not pulling, it's, you have side-by-side pulling there, and, uh, I talked to the council about that too, and he says that'd be in favor. They did that, and he did speak very highly of you, as his wife just did. So those are my comments, uh, what you guys want to hear?
That, no, I agree, I, um, like I said, I recall that the last hearing, that the neighbors that were objected because the, the cars were, were worried about them being on the street, turning and bumping into cars. I, I agree with the, the, or wants to open the parking up.
It's a curb cut, and the street is better.
And also being favorable to the chairman.
What's interesting is how the prior owner came here, saw that it wasn't going to get what he wanted, and neighbors are upset, and...
They sold out the way.
Sold to this poor guy, you know, misled him.
Yeah.
And, and then the difference in those three years is that there's no one in the room but someone supporting this applicant, which just goes to show that perhaps, uh...
Good neighbors, good neighbor can do a lot.
Right, just be nice, you know?
Be nice to your neighbor, do the right thing.
I will be, do everything, I will be voting in favor.
Do you have a motion, please? This is Sammy. In matter number sixteen dash zero zero one...
Go on.
Samuel Y. Singh, for his son, for a variance finding to change the use of the home back to a two-family residence on the premises number forty-four Summer Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance, uh, with the understanding that you'll get a new curb cut and...
The full length of your parking.
And a building, and a building permit from this fellow.
You need to get a building...
Yeah.
You're gonna cut at the width of the parking that you have there. Cut the fence, so you can drive right in like this, okay?
Yeah, you don't have to be moving.
None of this stuff. And someone opposing, one unit, two units.
He'll tell for you, guys.
Okay?
May I, I wish.
You mean, they'll get a plumber and electrician, put in a carpenter if you may. Is that seconding?
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more.
This is chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Second, all in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr.